So this was approved and this was submitted by then withdrawn. So is there some...
I appreciate the community. Obviously, they changed all the... Right? Appreciate it a lot.
Right, so all that was issued was a motion to accept. And you said no motion to send the issue back to the board? Oh, is it expired? Right?
We're gonna have more people.
He has an email today. And somebody's commented. Yeah, I mailed the email. Everybody but Sherry.
I may get a point to just go a little bit higher. So people have to be in fact...
He sent me an email saying, "No, um, hurt that out." I'm gonna stick with this.
Okay. John, how's it going? How you doing? Good, are you back? Good.
All right, good seeing you.
So which quarter is supposed to mean Thursday?
This week, I think he's on.
So we're only in for a minute tonight. And then we're gonna...
You missed it. It's all week. So why don't we have these guys meet on Thursday instead of Tuesday?
Kind of this, but I make a motion for simply a...
Dollar child.
I'll be in Mohawkdale.
Because his one year expired. That was his state to judge.
It's very embarrassing.
Here.
No. Everybody said whoever I said on...
I don't think we've had anybody plan anything.
Everybody stepped back and I was standing there going... I'm missing my normal varies runtime because of this. Well, I'll make it up to you. Do you want to go for a run? I could use a gun. If we get it early enough, yeah.
I don't know.
This last longer.
And then there's the second option.
Hey, Will, how are you?
Oh, sir, how are you?
Good.
Wow, I'm gonna have to, uh, let me take a picture of those socks, like, and show Lori tomorrow.
You should.
She'll have a count.
You should.
Are those the same socks the witch got hit by?
It's a little bit different shade.
We have a lot of use for them.
I guess I have to put the loan white paper stuff for both of them.
Oh, yeah. You're right, we gotta wait, supposedly.
No, well, the one was here, I folded it there.
Same with Kansas, they both have their...
The other one was folded up.
Just anything.
Picture flat.
Maybe they're stuck in drag. Respect it, houses. So let's wait a few minutes and hopefully someone will wonder through the door.
Yes, so when is the professional courtesy waiting period? Full professorship, 15 minutes?
It's something the applicant there.
Yeah. What was the rule when you were in college, like, if your professor didn't show up?
15 minutes. I think it's a 15-minute...
At what point can you get out of there?
15 minutes.
Oh, there goes one, we got four of them.
There he is.
Really?
One, two...
Okay, we can start now. Peter's here.
We don't work at any... Everybody Peter-boss.
Thank you very much. Okay. Are you ready? You good? Sound good?
Want to slide down a little?
Stand?
Supposedly, um...
I suppose it's... I always use a click to... But I think they have to do it.
Okay, the clock on the wall tells me it is 7:01 PM. So I would like to call the village board, Village of Webster Planning Board meeting to order. First order of business this evening. If I could have the board members review the meeting minutes from August 2nd. And if there are no major changes, additions or corrections, I will entertain a motion to accept these meeting minutes into the record. Okay? Would anyone care to make a motion to accept the minutes into the record?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. All right. We have before us tonight one item on the agenda. We have Mr. Mark Van Epps, developer of Birdie Woods Town Homes located at the southeast corner of Ridge Road and Phillips Road. Would like an extension of the approved site plan for one year in which to begin construction. I see his representative is here tonight, so if you would, sir, give us the particulars.
Great, good evening, everyone. My name is Scott Snellman and I'm an attorney with the law firm Davidson Fink. And I represent the developer, Mark Van Epps. So we, as you know, the site plan was approved in August of 2017. There was a slight amendment done in November, which was also unanimously approved. And so we are seeking a one-year extension for that site plan. Now, during the past year, my client sought out financing for a construction loan. And we were able to quickly get a commitment from a local credit union at the end of 2017. We progressed towards closing in the spring of 2018. Both sides were fully committed to the project. There was a sort of difference of opinion between the credit union and my client in regards to some of the terms, but they were fully committed. But my client just felt there was somewhat of a lack of comfort level. So we sought out other financing. We had two or three other lenders to finance the construction. And we settled on one. We have a term sheet from Lake Shore Savings in which we have accepted. And we are now, I've been working with their council. I've been working with the village's council as well about how this financing is going to progress for closing, which we anticipate in about 45 days. And then how it's gonna progress in the upcoming year and years beyond that. So I'm fully confident that the closing will go forward smoothly. We have a good fit with this lender. And I've worked very closely, as I said, with their council and with the village's council as well. And I feel very confident, closing, and I feel very confident that this project is gonna move forward in 2018. So that's why we're asking for this one-year extension. Not making any changes to the site plan, not making any changes to the amount of the letter of credit or other facility.
So just to clarify, the original letter of credit that was originally approved with the site plan was in the amount of $1,59,471.75. It was proposed amended site letter of credit amount for $710,516, which Mark is withdrawing.
Yes, yeah, so...
The original letter of credit is still in effect.
Right, so it'll be, it's sort of, this is a, sort of, the... It won't be, the, this particular lender doesn't, is not calling in a letter of credit, okay? They're basically billing this into a funding account. And so what we're, what Mr. White and the bank's council and myself have been working through the past couple of weeks is coming up with a, the particulars and the loan documents so that the documents are a letter of credit. But it will be in the amount, as you stated, of the money amount that was just over $1 million. So if you ask, that amount will stay the same.
Okay. Okay, so just as you see before you, there are only three members of the board here right now. So we are not full board of five. So it would have to be a unanimous decision on motions to grant the extension for a longer for the development. And also a unanimous decision, recommendation from the village board to accept the letter of credit amount as presented. So you wish to proceed?
Uh, yes, I do wish to proceed.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. So I propose questions to the board. Does anyone have any issues? So the first issue before us is the extension of the site plan approval for one additional year to begin the construction process. Obviously, delays due to financing are pretty typical in this business. But Mr. Van Epps seems to be committed to the project and has sourced out funding. And a one-year extension, in my personal opinion, it would not be unreasonable. But if anyone else has... No more issues? No issues.
No issue on time.
Karen?
No issue.
All right, then at this point, I ask a member of the board to make a motion.
You should probably do a seeker resolution, because it is an action. You should probably do a seeker resolution first. Type 2 action. You are granting an additional approval, which is an action which falls under...
Force seeker.
Seeker.
Okay, this is type 2.
It'd be type 2, yes.
So motion number one would be for...
To declare that it's a type 2 seeker. And by definition, has no significant environmental impact.
I always forget that seeker part for the extra. So if anyone would make that motion? This action...
I'll make that motion as stated.
Okay. Joe?
I'm sorry.
Peter made the motion for type 2 seeker?
Yep.
I second it.
Karen seconds. All in favor? Aye. Okay. Now, a motion for the extension of the site plan approval for one-year extension to begin construction. I will make the motion for the extension of the site plan approval for one additional year to begin the construction process.
I'll second it.
Karen seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, motion is unanimous. And then the next motion we have is for a positive recommendation to the village board to re-accept the letter of credit amount as originally proposed for $1,59,471.75 for the site plan infrastructure construction. Do I have a motion?
The only question I have about that, and maybe this is more directed to Will, there were a couple of emails going back and forth about the tap coat on the parking lots and driveways, which are included in this engineer's estimate. But I'm still unclear as to whether Mr. Van Epps was committing to do that in phase 1 or not.
So the answer to that...
Because you brought out that if he puts the tap coat on there and then they gotta build the other buildings, the heavy construction equipment could ruin the tap coat.
So I think the answer to that, in speaking, because I was, I saw, I was on those emails as well and I spoke to my client about that. And I think, you know, the credit facility, that $1 million that we spoke about, that will be in place during the pendency of all of those items. Whether or not that's during that initial phase 1 period or not is less relevant than the fact that that money will be available for all of those items. If that clarifies that, Don.
As long as, as long as his bank is willing to do that, because my understanding was is that his loan was for phase 1. And before they gave him any more money, they were, you know, they had to pay 70% of the apartment's rent.
Sure, but to that point, the agreement would be that that $1 million set aside would decrease proportionally to the completion of the items, we'll call them the phase 1 items. So if those are the only items left, then that amount would be not great. It'd be a smaller amount. So they would still be, so it's not as if that would hold up the, that would hold up the financing of phase 2. Does that make sense?
Again, if the bank's willing to put the money in this sort of escrow account, and the way we were structuring the funding agreement was the money wouldn't, the triggers for sending the money to this funding account or escrow account was if he, if meaningful construction, I forgot the exact language, if meaningful construction of the project stopped for a period of 60 days and then the village, this gentleman next to me, puts Mr. Van Epps on notice saying, "Hey, we haven't seen anything happening there for 60 days. You've got 30 days to get going." And then if that 30 days expires and he still doesn't do anything, at that point, we tell the bank, "We want the money."
Exactly.
And then it's at the bank's option, they either complete what's left on the engineer's estimate or the money goes to the village and the village does it.
Exactly.
Well, I just, all right, I mean, we might have to work on some of the language in that agreement to make sure...
Sure.
To make sure that this stuff...
I think that that money should be set aside for the pendency of the completion of those items. I mean, and I think that that's what Mark...
Well, that's how a letter of credit ordinarily works.
Right.
But it's our attorney stating... We might just have to maybe add something that, that at the end of his phase 1, and again, I don't know exactly what his phase 1 is, but at the end of that, that the money would be transferred to this funding account to cover the remaining items that are to be completed after phase 1.
Right, 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 so maybe, maybe that, whatever is left over, that money, again, proportionally to the completion of those items. Or money that is then flip that, if you wanna flip...
All right, because by that time, theoretically, he's got, you know, the storm drainage, the earthwork, the sanitary sewers, the water, all that stuff should theoretically be done by then.
Oh, no, it would be, I mean, the first thing...
So it's only the, it would only be some of this pavement and concrete. But, you know, the estimate for the tap coat was $47,804, which...
Yeah. So if, I mean, and again, if we got to that, I mean, if, sure, so if that money was, would be transferred over to...
Karen, you and I, you and I, you and I agree, we've just gotta make sure that the bank is on board.
Exactly.
The bank attorney's in Germany as we speak, so...
Yeah, she wanted to go to two weeks vacation, so that's our holding pattern.
It sounds as if potentially, you know, if there are any reworks because of phasing or then maybe the letter of credit drawdown is negotiated to a degree whereby there's enough money left in the letter of credit to make any necessary repairs or reworks into a phase 1 area because of phase 2 construction.
Right.
So just so, you know, you say, "Well, phase 1 is done, let's draw down maximum dollars out of the letter of credit." And then all of a sudden, you, phase 2 is completed and destroyed half of phase 1, and now you have to redo phase 1 because, you know...
Well, Mike was sorry, it was the language that was proposed. Basically said that all of this is completed in phase 1. So now you've got roads, you've got sidewalks, you've got streetlights, you've got driveways, you've got all that in. Phase 1, you've got the townhouses built. Phase 2 and 3, you don't. So now you've gotta drive all the heavy equipment on this. It's everything, you're digging, you know.
Right.
So I guess, Scott, the one thing, and maybe your engineer can do this, of the engineer's estimate, if they could just go through it and indicate everything that's not gonna be completed in phase 1.
Sure.
Just so we're not guessing, and then we'll know what that drawdown amount, you know, the transfer, the dispersion amount would be when phase 1's all done.
Okay, yeah, I think for sure. Yeah, and again, it seems like, I mean, those are, those are the smaller, those are the small bands.
Right, so I think you just go through this and put like an asterisk next to the things that are to be completed...
Okay.
After phase 1.
Yep.
Something like that.
Yep, I can have that done for sure.
And, but there's actually three phases, so we need it broken down between what stuff's gonna be phase 2 and what stuff's gonna be phase 3.
Yeah, no, I agree, we will have to... But we're okay with the amount of...
So for offer, is there a recommendation to the village board pursuant to any legal definitions and negotiations?
Right, and obviously, the funding agreement is, is, it's gonna be entered into by the village, so, you know, there's gonna be a signature line for the mayor, so it's subject to the village's board's approval.
Right. So our recommendation, our motion here is a recommendation to the village board for the amount, and then let the village board, I believe, will be able to take care of...
Work out the details.
The I's and the T's. Okay. So we need a motion, positive or negative recommendation to the village board to accept the letter of credit amount as proposed.
Can you just make your motion also subject to Mr. Van Epps indicating which items in the estimate are gonna be done in phases 2 and 3?
So we'll need that the letter of credit amount will be amended to indicate phase 1 construction activities, phase 2 construction activities, and phase 3 construction activities. Just so the village board understands the breakdown of the costs spread out over the duration of the project.
Very good.
Okay.
Is that the motion for the positive recommendation to the village board that you just made inadvertently or not?
That would be yes. Joe, did you catch all that, what I said?
Sure.
All right. So I, I guess I just inadvertently, inadvertently made the motion.
Because that was long and I wouldn't have been able to repeat it.
So at this point, do we have a second?
Second.
And, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Are we good?
Yeah.
We're good.
All right, very good.
Thank you.
You are good.
So Scott, it depends whether the next village board meeting is, what, the 28th? 28th of the day? A week from Thursday, a week from Thursday, 28th?
I mean, I don't know if we'll be able to come to it.
Well, that's what I mean, if, if...
It's not gonna be crystal clear in writing, I don't think, because she's, the bank's council's back on Monday.
Right, so...
I'm sure she's got other things to do, too.
Right, so it might be, the next meeting, what's the first one in October, you know?
It looks like, what, 9/27?
October 11th.
It might be October 11th, might be more reasonable.
That's probably more reasonable date for us to shoot for, I think. But I'm confident we'll get it done.
All right, so...
Okay, well, that concludes our business for this evening. I would like to make a announcement that Joe was gracious enough to give us the 2018 regional local event workshop. So anybody who needs their training hours for 2018, please take a look at the script, at the offerings and let Joe know what you might be available for to attend. And we'll take care of our yearly educational commitments. So with that, since there is nothing else to discuss, I will entertain a motion to end this meeting at 7:20 PM.
You make the motion.
You make the motion.
I'll make the motion to end this meeting.
And a second, I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, thank you for people. Thank you, everybody. I hate my voice.
She has to read us a...
Okay, thank you, Karen, for coming tonight.
It's like we have an audience.
I have... Yes, just the...
I can see, I can see this like...
And then that's the same, you go through the whole day or one session?
Oh, you only go to one session?
Why haven't I been involved in any of this fun stuff?
But they give you a lot...
There's nothing left. One of these days, I'm gonna have to sit. No, I think it's just a simple...
Hello. Thank you. Smile.
Oh, okay. Yes, I haven't gotten...
Although, probably this is...
Oh, that's...
So you're in the top of the... You're very important.
I'm learning, I'm learning.
Yes, you must have...
Must have trained and people... Yes, there...
So... That might be, that's gonna be a separate... Oh, so we've got construction for...
Well, I said that, you know? I appreciated that you sent it to my... Because I figured it out again. I just, I got that logged back in again, but I was, I was missing something.
Yeah.
Well, I just, like, today I was with my friend, she's like, I don't figure out how to get back in again. And last, was it last week or two, it just snuck up on me, like, I've never had anything sneak up on me.
Yeah. I tried to send it to my mobile. No, I actually, Sherry, I'm crazy. I tried to...
So why couldn't you?
There we go.
Dr. Cali, yeah. Her... Like, I've been having it there for... This wasn't a man with... Our under...
Right, which word? Right, which was?
She was getting married on the.
Yes.
I don't. Like, ladies, right now, we can't, she's vacationing. She's having the money. Yeah, right.
All right. Good night, Karen.
A good night. What do I need to do for my pool?
Oh, okay.
No, so I have to put the alarm, the electrical inspection was done. But I tried to put an alarm on it.
Yeah, it's obvious, I see the alarm.
You have to see an alarm and then we have a thanks, so that wouldn't be a problem with the.
Well, it's not a problem.
It's in a box. But do you have?
She's going to be able to handle it.
It says that the. Lab has been locked.
Blockable.
Lockable, so you want to really lock it, but can I just tap it off and that'll be fine? Okay, so, do I do?
Sorry, just.
All right, I have to have my husband put the alarm on.
Oh, yeah.
Do we have a session on it?
Yeah.
I am not looking for, I've been avoiding that. But.
It's a simple little thing.
Okay.
Of interest to a number of people.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's great. That's what I heard, that's what I heard, so most people just.
Okay. Sounds good.